We sit in the roll office.
Mr. Henderson?
I'm here.
Mr. Petroselli? I saw him on Zoom. Mr. Gallarducci, he's on Zoom.
Eric.
Mr. Colosima?
Eric.
Mr. Verducci?
Eric.
Mrs. Schneider?
Here.
Mr. Shashowski?
Here.
Mayor Coedlin?
Here.
Solicitor Dermott?
Here.
Engineer Brett?
Here.
I'm Joe Howard. Chief King?
Here.
Chief Chris Dane? And Director Miller?
Here. Okay, welcome. Let's start with the visitors' log. We have Bob Fryer.
Yes, sir. Excuse me, my name is Bob Fryer. I used to be head of the planning commission here. I lived my life in the original. I've been living in South Bay for the past 12 months. The reason I would like to pay some attention to your attention is hopefully I'm going to make the right decisions about very important issues concerning Bridgeville. This is a picture of newly built Maglockland Creek degree of patcher. Excuse me. And the lower photographs are from the University of Pittsburgh's study that they did about the cause of the flooding problem and how to solve it. I just want to emphasize again that the cubic feet of water per second, the water that will flow under the Barrow Hill Road Bridge is 3,250. The culvert on the Commercial Street, there's two arches, it will only flow 1,860 feet of water per second. And if you have less than that, it's around 1,500. I just wanted you to see that. I'll talk about the Barrow Hill Road Bridge in a bit. The other thing I wanted to show you is this shows the Barrow Hill Road itself, Maglockland Creek-Baldwin Street. This shows Bluff Street. Primarily, the reason pavement on that 500-600 section of Barrow Hill Road has had to be paved more frequently, it hasn't been the crick seeping under the road. It's been the 70,000 square feet of backyards from the four or five homes above that area of the street. They've been seeping over the road. This is a picture of the slugging of the backyards of those four or five homes. And I think one of them might be yours, by the way. And also, I think there was a period of time, I'm not sure when, 30 or 40 years ago, the county ordered all the people in that row of homes to disconnect their roof down spots because I guess it was overflowing the sewer system where it was previous amount into. But I just want you to get aware of those facts because it was on some of the sewers. Yeah, this is a little bit more about the degree catcher. I went up and took a look at it the other day, and I waited through the crick and took measurements. And I was, I was going to say, Ken, did your engineer from design this?
We finished it. We're in most engineers' store.
No, that's okay. What I found out, and this is going to surprise me, is if you're standing upstream from the collector, the distance between the one vertical column and that wall is six feet. And then on the other side, the distance between the opposing vertical column and the hillside is nine feet. That's, those are what I think are excessive. It's too much space for more degree to go through. I think you guys ought to take a look at that with Ken to see if you should maybe put in another column because this relates to the Barrow Hill Road Bridge again. For years, we have all assumed that the Barrow Hill Road Bridge was causing flooding because that's what the debris was collecting. But even when the debris was there, the water was still flowing under the bridge, generally with four to six inches of space. And once again, it was the culvert on the Commercial Street that's been causing the problem. What I wanted to show you was, I know, I think Mike sent a letter to Allegheny County asking them to replace the bridge. And I don't know if that will take five to 10 years. But what I'm suggesting is, I think that you should temporarily forget about replacing the bridge and ask the county that's used the money that's saved from having built the bridge and build a wall between the crick and Baldwin Street. I noticed you're taking an attempt to do that now, which I think that you're on the right road. But I think you need some more help. And the other thing I want to mention to you, in doing that, you have an opportunity of building a ramp right next to the bridge down to Baldwin Street that divert 50% of the Barrow Hill Road, 18,000 cars a day, through that Baldwin Street business district, which would definitely renovate rather quickly. And this is a drawing, but matter of fact, Glenn and Smith did this drawing, assuming that the Barrow Hill Road from the cement company to Maglockland intersection would be abandoned. This shows the good judgment of running this traffic from Barrow Hill Road down through Baldwin Street. And I can't think, oh, yeah, one other thing I want to talk to you about. I won't be any longer.
Yeah, while you're fetching it, Bob, rest assured that every lottery event we have is now we learn from.
Oh, it is.
And we are making improvements as we learn.
Trust me, I've mentioned it before. Since our new manager and our new engineer have been here, things have changed dramatically. I'm a very careful man. But I just want to show you a couple more things. This is something that you all know. This is all of the roads that lead to Bridgeville because Bridgeville was here 150 years before any of the other communities in South Bay. We go in this area of South Bay. There's St. Clair, Collier, and South Yet, great places to hunt deer. Bridgeville was an established community. That's why all of this network of roads leads us. But in the center, you have a four-lane road coming in from Collier, four-lane road from South Yet. There's the two-way water network is the problem. And I think that there are different proposals that have been made about that. But it was run by me, by competent, five or six competent engineers that were building a two-way couple. About two or three weeks ago, I talked with, excuse me, a good friend of mine about what he thought of two-way couple, and he wasn't so sure about it. And he referred me to the Coriolis two-one-way street system. And I went down there and took a look at it, and I just wanted to show you. This is not what Bridgeville system is. The Coriolis system is a half a mile or more of two one-way streets. The one street, both streets are three lanes wide. This westbound one is parallel to major industrial queues, factories, primarily a lot of truck traffic. Sometimes the speed there goes up between 35 and 45 miles an hour. And coming back, the average speed in a three-lane road is around 35. But a very important thing, one of many important things, the distance between the Coriolis roads is 100,000 yards. The distance between the Washington Avenue and Shady Avenue two-way couple is half that distance. It's very pedestrian, convenient pedestrian. So I just wanted you to see that stuff in my papers.
Thanks, Bob. John Doe.
Oh, hey, yeah. I didn't, I didn't.
I see one 20 more. I see one straight here in this number five business. It did serve on the hillside. Just wanted to make an update on it.
So we, the first two rounds of grants that we applied for, we were denied. What you see on the agenda tonight is we are making motion authorize re-submitting for grant. The original bid came in at almost $800,000, $800,000 to replace that. Right. So we were under the, well, we were under the understanding that we may have our success this time. There's nothing guaranteed, but we're going to reapply. I mean, we're as concerned as you are, we see the movie.
Yeah. With that, with the charge to your street and everything, I don't know if the traffic's going to get back in the after there.
Yeah, I don't know if that's something we should look at, restricting use of that road.
I don't hear. Because it's going to back, I mean, back somehow, if people come through there, so. Okay, yeah, I saw him do the drawing, and I saw a couple people looking at it over the summer. I just wanted to know. Far along the way, I think that I think is happening.
Okay. It is shovel ready. Project's been thoroughly engineered, got permitted from the railroad. We completed geotechnical engineering and invested in that. There's a complete plan. The problem was, the original estimate of the project was about $350,000. We cleared out the bid, and the market's really bad right now. Of course, it's still facing the bids came back, the council said about $800,000. So last month, council rejected all the bids that we received, authorizing the engineer's advice, rebidding it over the winter time. But taking advantage of this lag time between now and winter, the finance committee suggested, hey, the funding that could fund a potential project of this size is reopening. Let's give it one more shot. So we completed a grant application to potentially fund this while we wait to rebid for better prices. So just giving the grant another shot.
Okay, I'll hope for the best. All right, yeah. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. William Price?
I'll be heard it. I don't.
You want to break the agenda?
Yeah.
Michelle, we're counting.
I was just registering that we were represented here.
Sorry, you did?
No, I was just registering that we were, had a record.
Gotcha. Eric Newhouse?
I'm as well here just to address this.
Okay. Well, as we'll note.
I had agenda items, so I was hoping to get added. The first one I'll pass out is the plug-in. On motion number 10, you could take one and pass it around. The bid opening for this project was after the agendas were already put together, half of it put out. Below the bid received to be right in is state pipe services in the amount of $95,710. So coming down the table is the bid tab and the engineer's recommendation on that project. I had three additions to the agenda I'm hoping you would consider. If you could take one, mayor, and pass it down. It's resolution 23. It's authorizing a grant application to the COG for a community development block grant. We talked about this a while back. Replacing the sidewalks within Triangle Park and making some ADA improvements within the park. So that authorizes that grant application before we're going to submit it. So that's the first addition. Second addition that came in on Friday was a pay application, partial pay application number one to independent enterprises in the amount of $71,045.75. This is for the storm scepter project that we discussed at last month's meeting. The work is pretty much majority of the way completed. So you'll see this invoices for the vast majority of that project. So that's coming down the table. And then the last one kind of bridges on motion number seven, but it makes a separate motion to authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the borough of Bridgeville, the township of South Yet, and the property owner, which Eric is here to represent, regarding memorializing the tax assessment for the new development over Newbury. It's been agreed that 20% of that land is within Bridgeville Borough. 20% of that land, real estate taxes will come back payable to Bridgeville Borough, and 80%, including the building, will go to South Yet. But without this, the borough wouldn't have received any tax revenue from that new development. So I thank the solicitor for advancing that. So coming down the table is just bridging that, authorizing that memorandum of understanding of agreeing a memorandum of understanding to be executed. Any questions on those three items?
We'll get to read those.
But I apologize if this all just came in last week.
I'll replace those again. Okay, another business. I need a motion to approve September 13th, 2021 regular meeting minutes as submitted. So.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve. Go ahead. Need a motion to approve the October 2021 bill list.
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. Waiting for the delay over there.
Yeah.
I need a motion to approve the October 15th, 22nd, 29th, and November 5th, 2021 payrolls.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. I need a motion to adopt ordinance number 1023 in ordinance of the borough of Bridgeville, amending its code of ordinances, chapter 15, motor vehicles and traffic, park four, general parking regulations 15-402. Parking prohibited at all times in certain locations. Prohibit parking at all times and to establish a loading zone in a designated location on Station Street at or about Station Street Taylor Way intersection.
So move.
You have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. I need a motion to adopt resolution number 2021-21, a resolution of the borough of Bridgeville authorizing the submission of grant application to the redevelopment authority of Allegheny County for the order street slope stabilization, retaining wall, and stormwater improvements project.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to adopt resolution number 2021, a resolution of the borough of Bridgeville authorizing the president of the council, the borough manager, to execute a consent order in agreement with the Allegheny County Health Department. Note, this is phase two consent order relative to the operation and maintenance of the sanitary sewer system.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. All right, number seven. Need a motion to approve the lot line revision of parcels 256-G-20 and 256-G-30. Set final approval for approval and execution and release of the reported plan conditioned upon execution of a memorandum of understanding between the borough of Bridgeville, South Yet Township, and the applicant property owner stipulating STD agreed upon or apportionment of land building values between the two municipalities for tax assessment purposes for a joint submission to the county assessor as recommended by the Bridgeville Planning Commission. Note, the plan has been reviewed by the borough engineer and informs to the Bridgeville zoning ordinance and subdivision and land development ordinance. Any comments, people?
Really, we're here just to answer any questions that should happen.
Do we have any questions? We have.
We pretty much approved this years ago.
Yeah. Okay, take a motion.
Second.
No, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to authorize the disbursement of $13,140.70 to S&amp;M Industries for invoice number 1836, final for the municipal, Bridgeville Municipal Building Roof Replacement Project.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to authorize the payment of the 2021 minimum municipal obligations to the Bridgeville Patcher Plans. Number one, a non-uniform plan, $68,702. And number two, please, $1,115,115, or $159.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. I need a motion to accept the lowest responsible bid received in the award contract to state pipe services in the amount of $95,710 for the 2021 sanitary sewer O&amp;F CCTV program.
So move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to authorize LLR excavation LLC to compete in complete repairs in Maglockland Park Storm Outfall at a cost not to exceed $14,500 of the borough supplying all the materials.
So move.
Second.
So move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. Need a motion to authorize gateway engineers to prepare plans, specifications, and advertise the FEMA hazard mitigation Baldwin and Margaret Street demolition project.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We hear anyone back from that?
Yeah, I have my manager.
Need a motion to authorize the sale of the electronic auction and its advertisement of surplus police car number B1.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion scheduled to authorize the 2022 budget meeting for Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. The auto, borough voting, and virtual.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. Need a motion to accept petition to rezone from Robert, Roberto Walsh, regarding the request of rezone of billable parcel 255-E-280 located on Kellard Street from Conservation to Residential One and authorize referral to Bridgeville Planning Commission and Allegheny County Department of Economic Development.
Any questions?
I can.
What was the reason that was moved to Conservation?
I can summarize this whole situation. This family has owned this parcel going back to the early 1980s. It was passed on from her parents to revert. Back in the 1980s, it was still zoned R1. And it's up against properties owned by the borough. It's considered the Wabash plant of lots on the street. Wabash property actually looks on map like it's a park, but it's not. In low good conscience, it does make sense that that area is zoned conservation. Once you get to the very tip of it on Calvert Street, where this lot and the adjoining one is, it got just thrown into the conservation mix. Back in the 80s, they did have plans to build here, and it never flourished. Well, she's had this parcel for sale for a couple years now. There is a buyer that's interested in buying this property to build a single-family home here, doing her due diligence to sell the property. She finds that it's zoned conservation and can't complete the sale. She comes out and says, hey, I'm confused. I knew that this property was zoned residential. When did it go to this? And I go back zoning maps, go back to early 2000s when the change was. She's making a petition to us to reconsider rezoning her parcel that's contiguous to an R1 lot, so it isn't like an island. She orders an R1 lot in a paper street that's already R1. So we're just basically moving that line down to parcels. So everything on Calvert is R1. And then behind it, which is the woods, that's essentially the hillside between Osceola and those streets and the lower parts of Patterson, it would still stay in conservation. So hopefully at the end, once we go through the process and it's still wrapped up by the December meeting, she can sell it and it can be a billable lot.
Can I ask you a quick question there?
I was looking through that thing. It looks like it's going to cost these people close to a couple thousand dollars. All this is all.
Yeah, she, she.
Should it happen that way or?
Two things. There is a fee in our fee or resolution for a petition to rezone, which is $300. She has paid that fee, so that's qualified. It is in the resolution that all billable reimbursable such as advertising, the solicitor, and any engineering work to refund the amount that they would have to pay. She has paid an escrow of $1,000. So whatever is in use, we return to her and it is over.
It's over, is that not a problem?
No, so right now, it looks like it could be done for the $300.
This is where Butterball Earth lives right now.
Yes.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. I need another question?
I'll second that.
I need a motion.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. Need a motion to authorize the disbursements of the following real estate tax refunds as a result of changes in assessments. Year 2021, parcel 255-S-142, the amount of $66.88 to Andrew Elfer. Year 2021, parcel 254-E-328, the amount of $67.52 to Michael and Alina Gills. Year 2021, parcel 254-N-18, the amount of $75.17 to Timothy and Julie Dunleavy.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. Need a motion to accept and pay any commission due September 2021 real estate tax collector.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. Need a motion to acknowledge receipt of the always 2021 trade report.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. Need a motion to accept September 2021 police report.
So move.
Over?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. All right, we'll feel like we're moving. Need a, excuse me, need a resolution number 2021-23 authorizing the following application for CDBG funds for Allegheny County Economic Development for $23,200.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. I need another motion for partial payment number one from independent enterprises incorporated for the subject project, storm scepter improvements, partial payment number one in the amount of $71,045.75.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. Let's see. Just redid the first paragraph.
It's essentially the same as item seven. It's just authorizing the execution of the memorandum of understanding for that separation taxes.
So he didn't formal vote it. Need a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding for item number seven.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries.
It's up to you.
Sorry to make you guys wait.
I mean, this waited such a long time.
No problem. All right, thank you for your help. You're welcome.
Thanks for everything. It was great work.
Thank you. Committee reports, administration.
I don't really have anything, but I do want to remind everybody about the community workshop meeting I mentioned last month. It's Tuesday, October 19th, from 6:00 to 7:30 at the fire department's charters room. In advance, they're planning an interactive map that the residents can look at, a special page on the website where you can submit your concerns and ideas. And Joe, did this recently go out in the, this flyer?
No, the flyers posted around town.
Okay.
The chairwoman of the planning commission was able to help us out. She posted it pretty much.
Are they here in the offices?
They're at the front town.
Yeah, it's nice, it has all the information. But I encourage everybody to attend. Good stuff. That's all I have.
Yeah, looking forward to that, actually.
Yeah, me too.
My name is Joe producing.
Okay, quick update. The finance committee had a meeting today for the initial discussions in regards to the budget. Joe did an excellent job getting all of the different numbers together. It's very easy to smooth. Understanding with everything that we have going on. Exciting is a good word to say. As we had announced, we're having a meeting on, what day is that, Joe? November? November 16th is the public meeting. eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of the budget already with only expenditures of seventy-one percent. The sewer fund, the revenue is at seventy-one percent with expenditures of only fifty-nine. So we're doing very well as far as the budget. Health insurance renewals came in. Our rates are actually going down. I did know that that word went along with insurance renewals, but it's going down one and a half percent. And we have some other discussions as far as the finance committee talking about that budget that we bring up during the public meeting. Any questions? So am I. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Parks and Rec, Joe Losso.
Okay, uh, the parks will be winterized first week in November, so if you know, out in the city, it's in the parks. The rentals for the park season ends October thirty-first. We need permits. Uh, that's pretty much it on the parks. I just put they wanted to call, I'm the call. I just wanna let people know that the cog gave the borough a free day of use for the sewer back there. If I'm not a big dollar, Sheldon, if also has, because the road get pounded up there with water, today is a day free. And also the cog has ended into a contract with PennDOT for the use of the back of the machine when it's not being used on this palace, which will help a good bunch of down there. That's all I have.
Thanks, Joe. I think you're covering the.
Get a quarter, John.
No, I did hear the date when you said. Why did you say the wire in the first meeting?
It's up to the water company. Our guys usually first, second week in November. Pick up the free some cents.
Okay. Thank you.
Covering public works needed.
Oh, yes. As far as public works goes, uh, okay, they finished all the wall repair they put in the Jersey areas on Baldwin Street down there to help prevent the water from reaching the, on the Baldwin Street. The road paved improved. They paved Screw Street and Pushable Valley, which serves a lot of money. Our guys do pay on some of these smaller streets. Curbside leaf collection starts in October eleventh and runs through December tenth. Brush grinder collection program will be starting on November first. Street sweeping has ended on its September twenty-fourth, so we'll continue sweeping like the business districts, but it will be back till the spring as far as street sweeping. That's it, public works.
Thank you. Public safety, Bruce.
I don't have any. Can you report?
My pleasure. Thank you. Mayor Betty Cooper.
On October eighth, I was asked to attend a service at the Saudi Brock Church Bible Center Church on We Avenue where Pastor Brock and his wife, Cecilia, were celebrating twenty-five years in ministry. And this man has had an amazing life. He was actually imprisoned in Saudi Arabia for his Christian beliefs in starting churches. And in his country, India, his family was attacked, but now embracing God, they do have six churches there. They came to the States in two thousand and six, were in various communities, and then they finally moved here, bought the church on Dewey Avenue, and they're very thankful to be here. On October fourteenth, you have the opportunity to meet with Senator Devlin Robinson at the Schoolhouse Arts Center on South Park Road at nine thirty A M. to discuss current issues and ask questions. And on October fifteenth, he will be at the Westford Allegheny Community Library on Bayton Road in O'Dale. Also, this is cancer awareness month, so we are praying for those who have lost loved ones to cancer, and we're grateful for those that are still survivors. And through the generosity of Jess King, our police vehicles will be bearing this on their cars. We're thankful to her for that. On, our chief of police received a letter from a family, and I'd like to read it to you. It says, Dear Bridgville Police, words can't even begin to describe how thankful we are in how you responded to our son, Louis, on eight twenty-five twenty-one. Having our baby stop breathing is something we would never wish for any parent to go through. Your guys are so gentle and caring and went above and beyond. We're so happy that he is now healthy and happy. He had a mild seizure and is quickly returning to his health. Many thanks to Sissyama family, and the baby turned one-year-old on nine thirty twenty-one. The responding officers are Sergeant Young and Patrolman Lower. And much to my surprise, this evening, here in the beautiful bouquet of flowers, says congratulations on being named Pencil Ladies Mayor of the Year, Johanna Manata, and the school board, Shartier's Valley School District. Thank you very much. Oh, excuse me. We are still declaring trick or treat for October third, for Sunday, six to eight in April. And we hope that you will be attending all of the other events, particularly the one the rail yard has on October twenty-eighth. We're still looking for people to come with your cars and deliver candy out of your trunks. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Chief, extend our gratitude here. That's what brings me. And with that, your report.
Thank you, House President. Make one minor change on the monthly report, to submit it every month. Now, what's important to know, there's only about a dozen issues that are covered on this report. They're probably the most prevalent things that we deal with amongst many, many dozens of other issues. But I removed the motor assist line item because that only covers if we assist motors that's broken down in these directions. That only, something that happens maybe a couple of times a month. And what I did, I replaced it with business checks. You can see we had two hundred and three of them in the month of September. And what the business checks are, this is something we started last November, partially due to COVID because things had slowed down quite a bit and we were hoping to limit our contact with people. So what the business checks are, officers on midnight shift when they walk the beat or do apartment walks, they'll get out, check the local businesses, pull doors, check the windows, make sure they're secure during the day or during afternoon shift. This is when we stop by the local businesses and talk to the business owners or agents who go in and make sure that everything's going well with the businesses. So I just wanted to show that, you know, we've taken a proactive effort to make, to check the businesses and make an effort to go inside during business hours, you know, as part of community service, community relations.
Appreciate it. Yeah.
Just to add one more thing, there is a lot of check fraud going on in the, not just Bridgville, but just in the Southos area, especially trying to get over on elderly people. I am seeing it here with our bank as well as talking to other bankers. There's a lot of that going on. So if it sounds too good to be true, check with two people and then maybe double. So maybe even try to force people to get people's opinions and just, they're very slick right now, and it's amazing. I have heard of one that was very, very hot in the open that the news was reporting, and it sounded really legit, and I can see a lot of people being fooled by it. If it wasn't for a banker questioning this person going into the bank, it would have lost a lot of money. So please, just get it out there to people to make sure and double check when you're having something that's out of the box. Sorry, I just, the more we say it, the more people are gonna be watching, more aware of it.
Thanks. Gee, that's it. Okay, thank you. Solicitor Tom, turn it.
Thank you, and I appreciate you accommodating my virtual presence this evening. In addition, my ready report, did you hear me okay?
Yep. Yeah.
Okay, thanks. I do wanna thank South Bay Avenue Area for cooperation with us, and also big credit for creditors due as well back to Joe Cowler for actually helping bring that matter to fruition with the M O U conjunctions at subdivision development plan. Just to, just one of potential future parts that Joe and I will follow and try to bring to a similar conclusion as well on that.
Any questions for Tom? Okay, thanks, Tom.
You're welcome.
Rural engineer.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Reducci. I have an item I can, I would call it updating one tomorrow as well.
Thank you.
Okay, rural engineer Kevin Breck.
We did submit a report dated October seventh, and we have an additional one.
Need questions for the engineer? Okay, thanks, Kevin. Our chief Redustain.
Thank you, Council President. The month of September, Fire Department responded to fifty calls for service. Just a reminder, the upcoming Halloween parade is on October thirtieth. It will begin at eleven A M. And we did receive word last week that we will be receiving, we, Fire Department will be receiving a grant for COVID money to Allegheny County again, which we will be using to upgrade all of our flood mitigation, flood, such as trash box hoses and things like that. One last reminder, staple cash tickets, it's our Christmas time fundraiser. Tickets are being credited as we speak and will be on for sale probably this time next week. That is all. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. South Bridgville, that's Dan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Record has been submitted to the board, and from that, we just wanna remind the public our fall donation drive will be getting your mailboxes soon. We're looking for a capital improvement on our cardiac monitors, so each one of them costing forty thousand dollars, so I've got four of them to replace. Probably helps would be appreciated, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Anyone from the historical society?
May I have a question for you? Mr. Miller. Are you still taking donations for your October fourteenth matter, Tom?
Yes.
I'll talk to that.
Hart. Thank you.
Bridgville library.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to report that September was a little library month. We had a fantastic month, a lot of different fundraisers going on. Thanks to the community and all you who participated, attended, and contributed, we raised almost eight thousand dollars that's eligible for the prorated match from the Jeff Blunder Corporation, so thank you again for all the support. I just wanted to share, we have a couple openings, anticipated openings on our library board trust fees. So if you know anyone who's interested, go free ascend in our direction or you know their information, you can reach out, and we'll have one part composition as well as our community services clerk, so same thing, you know, great candidates, go free ascend to the library. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike? Bridgville parking authority, Mike David. Any questions for Mike? Thank you. Planning commission representative, Mike, you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick things that we went over. One was the, what you discussed tonight with Newberry with the lot. Eric and his engineer presented to us, made the recommendation. And then the other big one was, with the comprehensive plan, we made a recommendation for Bush Farm, we want to send, have you guys throw it on, hopefully. So I don't know if there's any news on the grant yet, and it was just a few last people this week.
You said then now it's by the end of March.
All right. We're just looking forward to that.
Thanks, Mike. It was an extensive effort for several months.
It was, it wasn't, you know, a whole lot, it wasn't planning commission, it was planning commission plus funds. It was definitely.
Yeah, a lot of work, a lot of, a lot to look forward to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Rural engineer Joe Cowler.
A couple of quick updates regarding the FEMA hazard mitigation grant. This is the Baldwin and Margaret Street demolition projects. We received back the fully executed grant contract from the state. The FEMA representatives handling our project recommend we get the project bids, the specifications and everything all ready to bid, that's what we're doing tonight. Just to be cognizant of that, once we acquire properties, we have ninety days that they need to be demolished, basically a grassy block. So once we get moved, and this is gonna move very fast, with the signed contract in hand, we submitted our first request to the state for our first drawdown for a million dollars. We're waiting for that money to come in. Once the money's in the bank, we can start scheduling closings. They did give us approval that any tenants that are in the identified properties now move up now, they are eligible for relocation assistance. So the goal is that hopefully within the next week, we can get an update letter out to the properties that are in the project saying, hey, this is our planned acquisition of your property. Anyone that leaves now that's a tenant is eligible for acquisition costs. And then the engineer from Gateway, we did change engineers on this project because it was just too far involved, so that's why you see the old engineer in this. They're moving forward with the D E P permits right now, so hopefully we can have everything lined up that come the end of this year, early next year, this is all gonna move very fast. We got back the appraisal report on the Italian club, has been presented to their membership, and hopefully we can have a determination back from them within the month that they're officially in or out, and then that kind of close that chapter. So that's where we are with the FEMA project. So it's actually moving ahead pretty fast now. Couple other grant projects, partner with the police chief, we received a thousand-dollar grant from the returned general's office to buy a signature of the drug handouts that would complement Halloween treat bags for the Halloween parade. And then grant application that was prepared and will be submitted tomorrow after your approval tonight was the Warner Street project. I'm hoping that we can lean heavy on our state elected officials, so if you can help me with that, I would appreciate that. I'd be if you would help me with that tomorrow. And then that grant seeks five hundred thousand dollars of a seven hundred and eighty-one thousand dollar project, which you can ask for five hundred thousand. I think that's really, it's a lot, but it is doable once you look at the scale of project and relationship to the business district and the railroad. I think that's what makes this project so unique, is that if it isn't really invested in properly, it could have an impact on the region's economy because it potentially encompasses, endangers the adjacent rail line, and it's also our main access to our business district parking lot. So that's how we're trying to craft the story of its importance that really sets the stage of where we're at. Regarding, another grant application was submitted, was for recycling equipment, improvements for next year, replace the leaf vacuum, public works vehicle, and potentially new recycling bins for all accounts in the market. So that application's been submitted, and we met with the D E P on that to see its validity, and they had interest in the project, and we crafted a project around recommendations from the D E P. So hopefully we'll know next year if this is supported, and it will replace a truck that's, that needs it. And our leaf back, it will probably get us through the season, but in all reality, this may be a lot of seasons to get out of it. It has a lot of, like, electrical issues, being flooded a couple of times. So that's the reason why we're going for a leaf back. See, if that machine looks very decent while you're replacing it, I want to understand if there are issues. There's any questions?
I'm going to Senator Robinson's event Thursday, if you want me to take a bath.
I'll probably get to you, hang on.
Cool. Thanks, Joe. In addition, I know he is, Joe has re-energized a discussion with PennDOT for reference to the north end of town and possible improvements on that end as well. We have a proposal that had been completed some time ago, we have submitted them again, and we are going to hopefully get.
I can speak to that. Go ahead. I'll, middle of last month, there was a meeting with PennDOT as they're studying the proposed tolling of I seventy-nine to Bridgville interchange. Aside that, we are adamantly against it, so please let that be the temperature of the room, but ancillary to that, should this project move forward, PennDOT's studying what would be the impact on diversion routes. And really, there's two diversion routes if you wanna get away from that interchange, and it's essentially Presto Side Gumbert or Route Fifty in Bridgville. Knowing that, hey, we have plans sitting on the shelf, do you really know what these plans are? And back in twenty eighteen, Borough Commission Traffic Engineers to do the traffic study plans for the south end, and eventually that led to the Shartier Street and the bridge project area, so, you know, that, that came to light. So this planning takes time, but if you keep to it, it pays dividends. Our home work here came out of that planning, and the last thing that really hasn't gone anywhere because it's. anywhere because it's a big toll swallows the north end, and it encompasses some real estate that needs to be acquired, providing ways to make doubling the lanes you choose for. So essentially, not reinventing the wheel, we had conversations with the Pendot district executive and the SPC on the importance of, hey, if you're considering tolling and the impact on diversion routes, now is the time to invest in the north end of Bridgeville. So we're pitching that, kind of at the same time, we're against tolling, but if this is going to go ahead, we need an ally in this fight and that conversation is starting. And then a letter was sent to them that you were CC'd in your mail addresses.
I'll back in conjunction with the Act of Transportation and Comprehensive Plan, there's some potential.
Some potential.
See that part now change?
It doesn't hurt to ask. It's not a promise, but we got to start opening doors. It's a good time.
Great.
Is it worth having those conversations, getting with Collier and trying to put that task force together again? Or is that too early?
I don't believe it's too early. If you look at the plan, without investing in new traffic engineering and start this all over again, you know, they have traffic engineers, let them do this, but we started this, okay? And you'll see, it is a multi-municipal project. That plan does show winding over in front of the Chartier Kelly Shopping Center. So it is a multi-municipal project that we really should start in the conversation.
I'll actually see Kyle on Friday, so I'll send you.
Maybe if you could share with him a copy of what we proposed to Pendot, it's in your box. It may be nice if they do a similar request because the source of this problem is not at Bridgeville Traffic, that shopping center is a major source.
Any other comments? Okay, anything under new business?
Just a reminder, the chili cook-off is this Sunday from 12 before at Fairview Park. We have 24 chilis, entrance fee is $10. There's all kinds of things that they're out there for kids as well as the adults. So it's going to be a great time.
Anything else under new business? Oh, thank you. There is a spaghetti dinner benefit for Brandon James, who's the son of one of our police officers here in town, who's going through some difficult medical issues. And that is to be held on Sunday, October 24th, from 12 noon to 6 p.m. Dollars are $12, children four to 10 are $8. So it'll be some Chinese options, some silent options, and things like that. So if you have some time to contribute to a worthy cause, I'd appreciate the all, spread the word to the all. Sergeant James is on. With that, I'll take that motion, Richard.
I'll move.
I'll move. Second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Opposed? Need a jury.